Let's call this meeting of the Plainview City Council to order. And the agenda is posted on our back wall here.
In the open meetings, there.
The open meetings, yeah, posted on the back wall. And we do roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Tyler?
Eric.
Ryan is absent, and myself here. And I guess we'll go to number one. Discussion presentation by David A. Lopez, Hush Blackwell LLP, on concerns with ordinance regulating small market discounts.
Good evening. My name's Dave Lopez with Hush Blackwell in Omaha. I'm joined by my client, the Principal of Colby Capital, Mr. Tyler Oliver, and he'll be presenting a few remarks about the proposed project after I do. I just want to thank everybody for coming together on relatively short notice. I know there are a lot of schedules to align. We know that just about everybody in this room has day jobs and other family commitments, so we appreciate you coming together on Monday. You know, I'm from Omaha, don't hold it against me, but I did spend ten years in state government in the AGA's office, and we did a lot of work with local subdivisions and municipalities across state. And one big takeaway from that experience was that when we ran into trouble, the best first way to try to resolve it was getting together rooms like this to try to solve it. So, I appreciate that we just had the opportunity to get together today here tonight and see if we can talk through some of the issues and perhaps reach a solution. I, before introducing Tyler and having him describe a little bit, I'd like to just be very candid as to what our requests would be. And I think you owe some forthrightness out of us as to what our lead-off request, and that's that we would request that you just repeal the ordinance in its entirety. Our reason for asking to do so is twofold. One, on the merits, we don't think that additional dollar store, and particularly this Dollar General that has been proposed, represents the kind of detrimental effect that the city was clearly afraid of when you passed the ordinance. This would not actually compete directly with some of the other retail establishments you have in town, like the grocery store or the pharmacy. Aside from some generic medications, it's not selling the same merchandise that the pharmacy does. Similarly, with the grocery store, a Dollar General, like the one that was proposed, and Tyler can elaborate on this here a little bit, but it's not a full-service grocery store. People are not going to the same store for both, for all of their needs. So, you're talking about two different market segments. From that standpoint, you know, we think just from an economic standpoint, the ordinance is, you know, it serves to effectively prohibit the Dollar General from coming in and operating in your, in your community. But in doing so, it's a solution in search of a problem that it doesn't even present. So, that's just on the merits, one reason why we don't, we don't think that, you know, the ordinance is justified in order to serve the interests that it purports to serve. By the way, you know, I would hasten to add that, you know, my understanding, in talking to Mr. Curtis, and he's been incredibly helpful in helping us understand the lay of land over the last few weeks, has been that the city previously had another grocery store, and it did close. And this one, the one that you have remaining, has actually remained open even with the Family Dollar being in existence. So, there's been a showing, I think, that all three of these establishments can remain in operation in the community, that the market would support them, and that they're not actually competing against each other to the death, is maybe been the fear. So, that's sort of another aspect on the merits of why we're talking about different market segments. And again, that's something that Tyler can elaborate on here in a moment. That's where we'd like to hope to center the conversation, sort of on the positive aspects of how we do not pose the sort of, the sort of threat that I think was motivated the ordinance in the first place. But, you know, I would hasten to add that there are some legal issues that we've identified. I don't know if members of the council and folks in city government have had a chance to review the analysis that we sent around. We, you know, intended it to be not a shot across the bow or anything like that, but to simply demonstrate some of the legal issues that we see and how the ordinance was crafted, and whether it would hold up in the Nebraska Supreme Court, you know, when weighed against some of the requirements of the Nebraska Constitution. I don't want to go over most of them ad nauseam. You have it. You have excellent counsel in Mr. Curtis. Let me dwell on one of them in particular. You know, we've talked about some federal constitutional violations. You've got those, but I want to focus on the Nebraska constitutional issue, and that has to do with special legislation issues and closed class issues. Under the Nebraska Constitution, a government cannot create an exclusive privilege or a closed class. And with the way geographically the ordinance serves to exclude an additional dollar store, in this case Dollar General, from even entering the market, you've created an exclusive privilege for Family Dollar. They're basically the only one who are allowed to operate under the way that the ordinance is currently crafted. That's unconstitutional. That's not a route that we really are primarily interested in going. We'd rather achieve a compromise. You know, we'd mainly like to see the ordinance repealed, because we don't think that some of the negative attributes, as I said before, of an additional Dollar, of a Dollar General coming in are going to bear out as you may have been briefed on. That said, if you're unwilling to do that, what we'd like to engage with you tonight on is whether there'd be some kind of compromise that would enable us to be approved under the existing ordinance language through the special use permit process. I think some of the criteria that are outlined there are similarly problematic from a legal standpoint. But, you know, there are some attributes with our store that would, that should render it inoffensive to the additional supplemental use permit criteria that you set out in this particular ordinance. Or perhaps if those themselves could be amended and you leave the rest of the ordinance intact, I think that would be a viable path as well. But, you know, from the standpoint of the Dollar General and the Family Dollar sort of competing against each other, each other to the death, such that, such that, you know, you have an undermining of the market base for the existing grocery store and pharmacy, that the segments are sufficiently different and the products that each of those establishments are selling is sufficiently different, that you're just not going to see that effect play out. You know, we would hope that the council would look positively on what the Dollar General project proposes to bring to the community. This marks $1.3 million worth of new investment. Creates seven to nine new jobs at a pretty well-paying rate. At least $20,000 in city sales tax revenue on an annual basis, and that's just in the initial years. So, I think that should be pretty compelling. You know, the folks that are behind this project, and you have one of them here before you today, are experienced. They know what they're doing. They study markets. They don't enter markets to engage in death spirals against their competition. That serves no one. Their economic analysis and studying and choosing Plainview to be a community that they want to be, to invest in, has not led them to the conclusion that that's going to be the case. And so, I think, you know, we'd like some recognition by the council that this Dollar General project would be net benefit to Plainview, not a net detriment. And allow us, either through a repeal, or if necessary, through an alternative approval through the supplemental use permit project, to go ahead and proceed and enter this market and serve, serve the community and the surrounding area. Nobody likes listening to lawyers, so I don't want to filibuster anymore. And I'll introduce Tyler Oliver to say a little bit more about his business.
Thanks, Dave. Tyler Oliver. I live in Kansas City, and my primary business is developing stores for Dollar General. We've been doing that for, since 2010. We've developed over 200 stores in communities similar to Plainview, from Kansas to basically the Canadian line, all the way through North Dakota. And a great concept through COVID, they were one of the beneficiaries because they had distribution, you know, channels and trucks, and people are merchandised to serve communities where lots of people, lots of merchants did. They stayed open, and they've been, you know, like I said, one of the beneficiaries. And, you know, as one of their, you know, preferred developers, and so they give me a list of communities where they want to go every year, and kind of my little territory. And by the time it gets to me, you know, market research has, you know, kind of given a bullseye where they want to be in the community. They've done a sales projection on the community. And, you know, it's been improved through operations. And, you know, nowhere in their modeling do they give the sales projection based on, okay, in order to beat this, we've got to have X, Y, Z kind of close, or, or, you know, this business is going to close. They don't do that. They look at Plainview as being a mini-regional, you know, hub that is drawing from a much bigger, you know, radius than just the community, and therefore, it will support Family Dollar, the grocery store, pharmacy hardware, Dollar General. And then, in their minds, they believe more the merrier, and you're now getting a little bigger regional hub to where people are not going to, you know, just keep going into Norfolk, into the Walmart Supercenter, loading up their car, and then going back in two weeks and using, you know, the grocery store as their filling, right? Like they're probably doing now. You get other retailers to develop here, you know, provide jobs, and it just kind of keeps growing, doing good things for your community. And I think it says a lot, you know, for a national retailer to make a 15-year, you know, investment in your community with their lease. It's actually 30 years, whereas it's a 15. But that speaks a lot of your community, where they're willing to put their, you know, not their life on the line, but they're willing to sign a long-term lease, make considerable investment in your community. And we believe, again, that Dollar General is complementary to your hardware store, the grocery store, the pharmacy. We all sell a little bit of everything together, right? But Dollar General, you know, their average basket size is $10, right? And their typical, you know, customer is older, female, will go to Dollar General 10 times a year and spend $10. And that's, that's their, their customer, right? And we don't, you know, they don't sell, you know, steaks and pork chops, and they're starting to introduce some produce, but it's smaller produce. They do have a lot of healthy, you know, frozen goods. But again, the mindset of going to the grocery store is you're going to go to the grocery store. Dollar General is going to fill in for some certain things that the grocery guy doesn't have. And the pharmacy, there's relatively no overlap there. I mean, everybody sells aspirin and cold medicine, stuff like that, but that's really where it overlaps. You know, they're proposing a 10,600 square foot store here, which is a little bigger than normal. Typically, they're about 9100, but again, I think, you know, enough of your community to go to a little bigger store. And, I mean, I'd be happy to answer questions. I could go for, you know, a while, but it's, it's a great thing that they're looking at your community. And it's going to help your business.
I have one, just one question.
Sure.
So, you said you do like market research and stuff?
We don't, but Dollar General does.
Okay, so there's a Dollar General in Pierce, which is 15 miles away, and there's one in Creighton, which is 15, so you're going to have three of them within basically a 30-mile span. I mean, I don't, I guess that's my thing, is like, why so many so close together?
Well, they like to have them about 15 miles apart. You know, because Pierce and that little community you mentioned, I mean, they're totally different. You know, Pierce is going down to Norfolk on a daily basis, because it's just, what, 10 or 15 miles away, right? They're definitely, you know, hot lap in the Walmart Supercenter. You're a little, a little further away, so it's not as convenient for you to go, but you're still going. It's still two totally different trade areas. And again, you know, they've got over 20,000 stores, and so their, their sampling size is ginormous. And they, they miss, they bring all their developers in about every two years and speak to us about the company and how they pick sites a little bit, and their modeling and so forth. And they'll open 1,000 stores every year, and they will miss their sales projection on these stores, roughly $20,000 a store. I mean, that's how good they are. You know, so they've, if they've got a $3 million projection year, it might be $2.8 million or $3.2 million. I mean, they're so good at that, and that does not, again, they don't model this based on somebody leaving, right? It's some, more people coming into Plainview.
You don't know how many people were in this town?
2,500? 1,500.
No. More people going to come to this town?
Yeah, they think so.
The county you just brought up brings something to mind I'd like at least to comment on. You said $10 common purchase, 10 times a year. Well, that's $100 out of that buyer. And we've got 1,000 buyers, if you're lucky. So, that's $100,000. I'm guessing you don't expect to survive on $100,000 gross a year.
Right.
Where do all the rest of the people come from? If there's a store 15 miles in either direction?
Outside the community. Outside the community.
Okay, so we got Creighton nearby with a hardware store. We don't have a hardware store, you know, so they're going up there already. Bring, if you've got a hardware store idea, bring it to town. Don't look at it. You said people, we are not, these stores are not competitive with the grocery stores. Vega chips. One guy's selling Vega chips, and the other guy's selling Vega chips. Are they not competitors? That's competition.
Not on every market segment, though.
Yeah, there's certainly, there's certainly overlap, but the whole store is not over.
Not the whole store, but it's still competition, you know? And it goes a lot of items in the store. So, you can't tell me it's not.
Well, and Councilman, could I add something on that? Part of what, the point that I was trying to make, and I think in service is important, is the fact that you already have Family Dollar here for several years. And based on that logic, the Family Dollar itself should have been detrimental to the grocery store and wasn't. I don't know, and correct.
Excuse me, and it hurt us immensely.
Yeah.
These are dollars. Dollar Generals, Family Dollars, I heard are now bringing in fresh produce and meat down the road. I don't know how many months I did hear that, not too long ago. Is that not true?
The ladies here run the grocery store. That's who you're talking to.
Yeah, they are rolling out fresh produce.
And meat?
No, the meat's frozen.
I heard, yes, I did hear meat.
I'm not sure about that. But again, they're, they're
I did hear that.
They're fresh produce. If you've seen one, I mean, it's about the size of those two car tares.
For now, for now.
Well, and
For now, it might be. When Family Dollar came to town, it did hurt us. So, you can't tell me that a Dollar General, come to town, a Dollar General and a Family Dollar in this size town? Is it not going to hurt our local grocery store? We've been here for 26 years.
We think it's going to help.
I know it will.
No, it's not going to help us.
We think it's going to help.
No.
There's going to be
And we're not here tonight, I mean, to cut people off, but we're not here tonight to really conduct a debate, but to ask questions about what they're doing and how they're doing it. We'll have some other things, times to debate. So, let's stick more with the questions. And let me back up to that question. I've worked economic development in Plainview for longer than I care to admit. And we had an Alco store was going to come here once, and they did a study and came back and decided there's no way in God's green earth we can make an Alco store work, and they went away. Of course, I guess it's an entirely different business model. I mean, maybe that's the answer. But it surprised me when the Family Dollar tried to come in in the first place. I raised this today, because it was my given understanding from years past that we couldn't support big stores here, and yet, here now we're coming up with another one. It just seems unlikely to work. Somehow, your people are convinced it will, huh?
Well, and Alco was, they're 25,000 square feet, so over two and a half times
Well, I picture, yeah.
Then
Well, they did the duck wall or something. It was a smaller version of Alco, but anyway.
Yeah, and they were, Alco duck wall, they were more soft goods, you know, more clothing and stuff like that, and didn't have, you know, some of the things that bring people in.
There's also brand, brand recognition issues that can result in this different input into the market analysis
Yeah, that's different.
In concluding
Different customers.
Right, sure, yeah.
Dollar Generals are more of a fixture across rural America than the Alco.
Certainly not, they've, yeah, kind of expanded to fill the gap.
There's a lot that goes into it. I mean, the very fact that we were talking about the number of Dollar Generals that have been able to successfully coexist across greater Nebraska, you know, and in most instances, I think, not driving grocery stores and whatnot out of business. You know, I think that's proof that these folks are not just random in making economic projections as they enter markets, so.
So, we're talking about market studies, and I'll try and stick to, so we're not debating. But my understanding, so the dollar stores, they target low-income moderate towns?
Not, not necessarily.
Not, okay, a few, there's quite a few articles on it.
You know, they're
And a lot of quotes, I think, from Dollar General representatives that I was reading, what the target market is. So, what is it then, if it's not? Why, why a basket, a $10 basket?
Yeah, their, their target market is, is communities that are 30 miles or more from Walmart, right? They're not being serviced. They don't have, they're just, they're just too far from goods and services, and that's why they do well in small-town America. That's their, that's their
Okay, see, so, so with that being said, I mean, I buy my groceries every week down here at the grocery store. Eighty-five percent of them do, the other 15 are probably at the Family Dollar. You know, so I do buy the Family Dollar. I'm not going to Norfolk to Walmart. I haven't stepped in Walmart for probably three years. I mean, there are people that don't go to Walmart all the time.
No question.
I don't score, don't work at all, so.
I have a question.
How'd you get to Pearson? I didn't do that store, so I'm not sure.
But so, there's other truths to the target market?
What's that now?
There's other truths to the target market than just 30 miles out?
Yeah, right.
All right.
Susan has a question.
I do have a question. So, you mentioned that when you come into a community, you don't hurt the existing businesses and that you help them, but a simple Google search will bring up 100 articles that say otherwise. One of my interns here had a really good question. You talked about your market research, and that what you do, and according to your research, Plainview's a good target for you, but do you do market research on how your businesses affect the already existing businesses? Like, for example, in Pierce, when Dollar General came in, and then they lost a grocery store within a year, and now the net taxable sales are leaving the community really fast. Do you track those things once you come into a community?
No, I, I don't. I'm sure Dollar General corporate does. I'm sure they do. And, yeah, you know, and there's, there's, certainly you Google Dollar General, what they do, and there's a number of articles, right? And what, what was the reason, and there's always backstories behind grocery stores closing, right? Was, was the, were they 80-some years old, you know, like the guy in Stanton, you know? You know, who knows, but there are also backstories to all that, so, yeah.
Let me also add, you know, that's a business point that Tyler made. There's also a legal point there, which is, you know, I, I'm failing to see necessarily where that part of a justification for the ordinance would fit into its legality. And that's, you know, the world that I've dwelt in, in city, in state government, and now in private practice. And this is something that Bruce and I have gone back and forth on, you know, to some extent. I think they've been very productive conversations. You know, to circle back on a point that was made a few minutes ago about whether the Dollar General would potentially sell produce. Frankly, if it did, that would undermine one of the core tenets that you included in the ordinance, which is to prevent this undefined and vague concern about food deserts. Well, putting aside the fact that, you know, I'll stand by what I said in the letter, which is that I don't think, I think the way that this has been framed in the ordinance is extremely problematic, since you're referencing provisions from the federal government that aren't even codified statutes or promulgated regulations or anything that someone can go hunt down and determine, okay, this is what that means from an objective standpoint. If that were true about the Dollar Generals potentially at some point down the line being able to distribute fresh produce, that would undermine the food desert issue. So, and that's one of the core justifications for the ordinance in the first place.
Yeah, and there's admittedly a fine line there. I mean, on one hand, to protect the public thing is food desert. Protecting the businesses is a competition issue, but that has lots of other legal problems.
A lot of it.
And that, that in itself is not something we would start, at least start out trying to do.
Right.
You know, everybody needs to understand that protecting the health and welfare of the community is where we have to kind of stick with on our topic here, more so than protecting against competition. We've always had arguments about competition. It comes all the time, you know, if you've got one hardware store and another one wants to come, the first guy doesn't want another hardware store. And you see that. We've had that argument in the economic development realm 20 times on 20 different topics since I've been around here. But we do have to be cautious that just restricting competition is probably in and of itself not a viable legal theory. Okay, are there other questions?
Yeah, Dave, in your experience, I've been kind of reading up on this. Is Rainier the only city that you know that has passed an ordinance like this?
I am unaware, and I could be wrong, but I am unaware.
There's a lot of information online.
Yeah, I haven't saw
It has to be true, but
Yeah.
I'm reading that we're not the only ones that have done it.
I, and I, but when I say I'm not aware, that doesn't mean it's not happening.
Districts
I, you know, I have, I have contacts at NACO and the League of Nebraska Municipalities. I think that they probably have a very current assessment of, you know, the state of municipal ordinances on different types of retail establishments. There was a wave of this in the late 90s and early 2000s on the other end of the spectrum regarding big-box stores in, like Walmart, in larger communities. There's a lot of litigation surrounding that, mixed across the board. To answer your question, Councilman, I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many communities across the state are considering them. What I can tell you is that, to the extent that they've been enacted, none of them have been tested legally. But, you know, they, they would pose, if they're, if they're drafted even remotely similar to the way this one is, they would pose the same kind of constitutional legal issues that this one does.
I'm just curious to know if it's true, if there are more, if they do go to court.
I, I know
That's something that needs to be researched.
I know they haven't gone to court. That I can, that I can say with, with near certainty.
And in a general sense, fortunately or unfortunately, Nebraska is a tiny decimal point of the litigation that happens in the United States. You know, we have very little activity of any type in Nebraska compared to a national standard. So, it's awfully hard to find cases in Nebraska.
Well, I'm not going to Nebraska, it could be anywhere.
I know, but I mean, you mentioned, for instance, the Nebraska Constitution. Probably they've never really come down on that, although they've had some rulings in different areas of it. But Nebraska has very little specific hard case law on a lot of the topics, because Nebraska is unique by a national standard.
And it doesn't have to be Nebraska.
Well, so, Councilman, that's a great point. And on the federal constitutional issues that we've identified, decisions in other jurisdictions, particularly in our regional court of deals, which includes Nebraska, would be enormously instructive. And I'm more than happy to supplement the analysis for the council. Bruce's point, I'm not going to, I don't think he was making a point necessarily one way or the other, but his observation, I think, was, is very accurate, which is the Nebraska constitutional piece is a freestanding and independent defect in the ordinance. It could be the source of having it struck down alone, notwithstanding the federal constitutional problems. The closed class and special legislation issues stem from a Nebraska constitutional provision that doesn't exist in every state's constitution. And it's something that does have a pretty robust body of decisions at the Nebraska Supreme Court level. And so, we don't have to, you know, peer off to other states or look to ancient history to see how the courts would be likely to decide that. The requirements are pretty clear. And one of them is that if you create an exclusive privilege or closed class, where it's only one person or one entity that gets to operate in it, that violates the special legislation clause. I would almost regard it as a textbook violation of that clause with the situation that's been created in the wake of this ordinance, where you've basically bestowed upon Family Dollar the exclusive right to operate, and no one else can ever come back and come into the market. That runs headlong against the special, the special legislation clause. I would add one no. There's also discriminatory zoning prohibition in Nebraska law. It runs along a similar analysis. So, those are just Nebraska legal issues, to say nothing of the federal constitutional issues, which, as Bruce, I'm sure, has advised you likely in executive session, and that's all I would ask or be entitled to know about it. as Bruce, I'm sure, has advised you, likely in executive session, and that's all I would ask or, or be entitled to know about it. Um, but that, uh, presents additional dimensions of potential exposure to the city from a legal standpoint. If this ordinance were subject to challenge by either us or anyone else down the line.
And, and we haven't, actually, not that it matters too much, but we haven't done that yet, and wanted to hear you guys out, and then compare to the letter, and get all the facts, and we will have to have an executive session to discuss the litigation risks and the potential costs. I've mentioned that in passing in the opening meeting, that if we end up in a headlong battle, this was probably a difficult battle, and likely an expensive battle, but that's something we have to talk about as a policy matter.
So, well, I, I mean, so, not just last council meeting, council meeting before, we were presented with somebody who's coming to town. Didn't know who, weren't announced, it was clear, but we didn't know. And now you guys are coming forward to us with a legal battle, right?
No. Everything we've tried to present to you is, is, is in interest of the compromise. We've, I've tried to make very clear, although it is our obligation to point out some of the legal challenges this could face, uh, our goal is to achieve an amicable solution here, um, and achieve some kind of compromise that would enable this project to go forward. We have no interest or no desire to engage in a legal battle, protracted or otherwise, with the city of Plainview.
And, and to further that comment, when word got out that we were looking at town and we were looking at Madison County Bank site, someone at the call, at the city called the owner and said, you cannot sell the Dollar General. And then immediately later, a week later, there was an ordinance passed. So, yeah, really, what, you know, rolled out the welcome mat for us. Um, we'd like that, you know, we'd like to, everybody get along and, and do well together, but, um, that's not the way that, you know, we've been treated so far.
Right. We'd like to know who's coming to town, though, too?
Well, I think that's how it got tipped off. My contractors called, said it was Dollar General, our architect called, and that was, and then the next day, the ordinance was passed. So I think everybody here knows, you know, who we were and what we were trying to do, so that's not a fair, fair statement.
One thing I can say is, I wasn't the one tipped off anybody, I was the one who took on to, company I call her, who does some marketing. You know, she got numbers from me for what it would take for water, sewer, X, Y, Z.
Chalkathen Missouri.
Uh, maybe. I would have to look at emails who it was and everything. Either way, um, they did not disclose what store it was. So I, I can say that's, that's, that's not true that we knew it was Dollar General by any means. They, I asked, and they said, we're not, we're not letting you say who we are, you know, we're just a store looking to come in. So just make, I mean, I'm not saying that matters, but just so we, we didn't hear that it was Dollar General, and then this thing came about. It was, there was a store coming in or something, that was, you know, where we're at now. So just to make, clarifying that, we didn't know. So I'm saying, your contractor didn't say, hey, we're Dollar General, we'd like to come and help. That, that's not what came out of their mouth. It was.
And, and let's, let's stick to our plan, we're not, we're not.
I'm sorry. Oh, oh.
Two's got her hand up.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. Um, so you have an issue with the ordinance at the city applying to pass within the city limits. Why fight a small town? Why not just go outside the city limits and do whatever you want to do? You're not that far away, and I'm assuming, when you guys look at plans, you're probably looking more than one site, when you look at an RFP or something like that, so what is the problem with just going outside the city limits and all this falls away?
I mean, one point on that, I'm sure you have some say in it, but, I mean, right out of the gate, if the Dollar General were built just over city limits, uh, or just outside your zoning jurisdiction, I think probably would be more precise. Even assuming that some of the economic fears here are true, which we don't think they are from an objective standpoint, but if they were, you'd have the same effect, and you'd be turning away a great deal of annual sales tax revenue, new city jobs, et cetera. One point three million dollars worth of investment and whatnot. So, I mean, from that standpoint, I, I'm just not sure.
So you'd rather engage in a, a potential legal challenge than ju, than make a city spend money versus.
We, no, we.
So what, what does, what does that do for the city if we just went, you know, right outside the city limits?
Well, there are fourteen-dollar stores within a forty-five mile radius of Plainview, north, south, east and west, and there are only five grocery stores. So there's already more than double, and more than half of those sit outside the city limits. So I'm just wondering why that's not an option for, or you look.
Well, in, in, in most of those cases, it's the first, you know, cornfield outside of town, right? Most cases, we don't get to roll into, you know, Plainview, and there's a, you know, a great site, you know, right on, you know, Main Street. Uh, and that's why they're, they're on the outside, but, um, you know, I don't, I don't know that that does anything for the city if we just went outside of town. You guys still have a one-mile, you know, jurisdiction.
For what it's worth, one other thing we've heard, well, in dealing with Casey's, coming and going first twenty-five years ago, and now they've rebuilt and expanded. You may be saw the Casey's down near East on Highway Twenty, and they always locate to some extent, uh, centrally to residential, because they get a lot of walk-in traffic. People come in and buy a six-pack of beer, or a quart of milk, or a candy bar, or something, and they walk in. I mean, I, I guess where I was going was just, is that not, if that's a factor for the, for the customer base of the Dollar Store, too, isn't it?
Absolutely.
There'd be a certain amount of walk-in traffic.
Absolutely, yeah. Always the, the, the best site in town is one similar to what we've got versus, you know, because we've, you know, we got kids, customers, there's the pool right there, and there's.
Kind of prefer to be in a residential-type setting, I, I mean, that's what we got out of Casey's over there.
Absolutely.
Because it, it does pick up something anyway for that exposure. I was just curious about that, but I imagine your, your type of store would have the same argument. But other questions about their intentions and plans? Do you, do you have any details, I guess I, just one more pops to mind for me, do you have any details on this produce or fresh food business? I mean, how much or what kind, or how often? Where would this come from?
Well, they are, they're building a, uh, a warehouse right now in Blair, Nebraska, that's supposed to be online in January. And how they, you know, roll that out, I have no idea. Um, you know, they started with produce in the southeast, and, you know, Dollar General's based out of Nashville, and so everything kind of starts there, and, you know, works the way it lasts. And then the stores that I see in Missouri, um, you know, the produce section again is, is the size of, you know, two cart, you know, those two tables there. I mean, you can get a potato, tomatoes and onion, and, and a few things, couple of bananas and an apple.
From the standpoint of our grocery store operators, I mean, they will obviously show up at other meetings and express their opinion. If they knew more about your stuff, it would be a more of an informed opinion. This would hurt us, this won't hurt us. Uh, is there any possibility you could give us some detail as to what that stuff amounts to, other than the general description?
Sure.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt, I mean, it would just be working from an informed position anyway, is what would matter or what wouldn't?
I could, I could, um, probably take some pictures of a, a store close to me, of a produce section in a typical store.
And, and the thought is, it's fairly consistent, I mean, at least, of course, plans can change over time.
Yeah, we think so, we think so.
But, uh, in a general sense, that what you open up is fairly consistent, that's what you got.
And let me, let me add this, Bruce, also, you know, this was the second part of my, uh, opening remarks, but, um, you know, we've talked about potentially pursuing the, the special use permit process, um, and pursuing a compromise with the city via that process. Um, you know, if the council indicates, uh, that it's going to be reluctant to outright repeal the ordinance, uh, as was our initial request, but that, you know, we could deal with you in good faith through a special use permit process. Um, I think we would certainly make all of that part of that showing, um, and it would be a pretty comprehensive, you know, we have not done, maybe taken that formal step.
That's the persuasion for a special use permit, if it's gonna work here, it's why it's good, essentially.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense, that's, that's the, but even, even early on, it wouldn't hurt if we knew something more, whatever you feel you can reveal and without detriment. Well, that's a thought. I don't mean to try and run the show, Bob, you, anybody else got questions or something? What else is there to know about what they're doing and how they're doing it? What about timing? If you were to start in, I guess there's another thing that just pops to mind. I mean, if you were, if you were to start in, it would be built next spring or something like that, or it'd be hard to say.
I think we'd build, uh, we'd, we'd like to start construction like this fall and open in March.
Kind of the picture.
Yeah.
Okay, so on his questions, since we're gonna talk about a few things like this now, uh, is it Wolf's contractors?
We use, um, we use a general out of Chalkathen, Missouri, and we use typically the, um, the site guy, dirt guy is pretty local, electrician's local, uh, building erection guy is from Kansas City, some local trades, concrete guy's out of Missouri, um, yeah. And, and every job's different, you know, I'd have to go look and see, we just, we didn't really open a store in Marford, and, you know, I'd have to look and see who all the subs were there, but we, we'd like to use locals, and we can, it's a, it's a pretty fast process, and so lots of times we can't, you know, get some of the guys to move at this, you know, particular pace, or, you know, in this particular line or whatever, but we'd like to.
Today's markets, you can't get them to move at all.
That's true, that's true, yeah, and they're way more expensive.
So, according to our ordinance, really the only barrier is the fresh produce section, is that correct? Produce and use, like, if you had that, you'd be giving a break tomorrow. Is that, is that what I'm?
There's gotta be a certain.
No, and I don't think we should try to go to those kind of details, I'll go over that with the council, but, you know, if they, if they had an inventory that fits the bill to qualify as a grocery store along with a big-box discount store.
Then they'd be in.
Then the ordinance really wouldn't ban. But the question is, how close is that, or what is the possible public detriment if the grocery store did go down? I mean, we, we've got to talk about that in more detail.
I, I think Bruce is, the, the way Bruce has described it is accurate, the, you know, another way to put it is if the project met those parameters, it would probably fall out of the definition under the ordinance, hence the.
And it'd be going forward.
Well, I mean, whether it's a case or not, I mean, it, it, Kylie can speak better to this, but it would probably also just fall out of the standards of what's typically a Dollar General.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So it's.
The big thing in there is what, sixty percent grocery? We, we just don't have sixty percent.
I mean, that's, that's in service of our main point, which is that, um, you know, although we make no concession that we wouldn't admit, meet the special use permit criteria, I've touched on those, you know, indirectly. We're happy to revisit that in a future submission. Um, but the main point here is what I think Kylie has, has described pretty astutely, the differentiation in market segments and the lack of direct competition, um, and the absence of any objective economic criteria that would show that this is gonna come in and be, you know, somehow do something that Family Dollar didn't do to the existing pharmacy and grocery store. And from that standpoint, you know, I, I think we should be permitted to proceed, but along that way, you know, we want to work cooperatively with the city to get there.
I think I've learned as much as I could help to.
Yeah. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I recognize we're, we're at a very limited forum here, so we've got to somehow get the whole council together as quickly as we can. I know you're on kind of a short string, but we've got to let everybody be informed of what was said, and I've got notes and and we've got your letter, but we've got to get the council together to talk about this, to get to some level of policy discussion. And then I'd ask for some type of formal response, I will certainly get you one, but I've got to have the council get some input. And to then do that, we've got to have another meeting and perhaps an executive session to discuss all the factors.
And, yeah, we just pray the church.
Yeah, and as you recognize, it's, it's not a every-two-days thing to have a meeting here, but we'll do the best we can, we'll get them together promptly and get you an answer. That'd be the kind of the plan from here out.
And as, as we've already talked about it on the phone, um, if it would facilitate that process and give the city, you know, something else to chew on, we're happy to make the formal application for, uh, something.
Well, we've talked about that, I, I'll give you a call within a few days here.
A special use permit application.
Yeah, and there'd sure be no harm in that, and you've got a little of the raw material on that. Courtney was gonna bring a zoning book?
I brought my zoning book, as you asked me to.
I brought your helpful scan, so, thank you.
Oh, you got a bunch already, so now?
Well, you emailed it to me.
Just, just the special use.
Oh, right.
The whole zoning book is here. If you'd like to take ten minutes and page through it and say, send me a copy of this, send me a copy of this, we can sort of do that. I mean, there's a definition section, there's some other things that would bear on the big picture of what zoning is allowed in certain areas and so on.
Is that online?
No.
No, unfortunately not, that's why I suggested paging through it.
Could I make a, I mean, could I make a request for a scan?
Yeah, I just, today was a Monday, so it wasn't gonna happen today, so, I mean, if you, I can get to you part of it in the week, if that's sufficient.
Do you want the whole book?
You want the whole? Okay, okay.
I mean, I recognize that, I guess I would suggest to you, but it's certainly your call, you could leave out multifamily housing district. You could leave out agricultural district.
If I start picking and choosing, it's probably tougher for Courtney to pick out.
But that's right, if you're okay with the, if you're, if you're okay with the whole book and just a reasonable charge for copies and doing, that'd be fine. Okay. Yeah, I, that makes sense, it certainly is easier to just go through the book and scan every page, no question. And that's why I mentioned in my email, I was kind of unreasoned, unwilling to do that, because I don't think you want us sorting through the book to show you what we want you to see. And to some extent, you need, you have a right to see the whole thing, you know, but need to do that. Okay, that makes sense. What else?
Anything else?
I, just a point of clarification on the format of the meeting, are you just accepting our presentation today, or is there public comment, others, or?
Just your.
Pretty much.
Your, your.
You caught a couple other comments, but there's not much else here right now. I mean, the, the, the agenda item was to have a presentation from you guys, that's what we're here for.
More than likely, we'll be meeting with public comment.
Certainly, if there's anybody, so, yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll be notified, I'm sure.
Thank you again.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we know this is impromptu, so we appreciate it.
Thank everybody else for coming.